Motion concerning the financial report for the month of November.
I'll make motion to approve.
Move. Second it. We're ready for discussion.
I have, uh, I'm gonna say, I guess, several issues or questions to ask about before we completed an approval. Started trying to look over the, the November report and trying to compare it to our twenty twenty-two budget and try to see how they were meshing together. Uh, ju- just as a matter of, of technicality, the second page of that November report where it shows the solid waste expense. That solid waste expense is a kind of a typo. It says a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two eighty-three. That total is actually a million, three ninety-two, two eighty-three. So it's just a kind of a typo there. I'm, I'm curious about some of the items that are here and I wanna, I guess, asking about them in the November report. Uh, if you'll look on the, the page of the general fund where it shows the revenues and expenditures. And in the revenue section, uh, account number forty-one, two hundred, housing authority makes a payment in lieu of taxes that they have for much many five years up here. It's budgeted for six thousand dollars, but nothing's been received this year. And I don't know if we're supposed to request it, who's monitoring it, or if they're just supposed to say thank you and here it is, but, uh, it looks like if, you know, we ought to give the six thousand dollars unless it's been coded somewhere different. And, uh, so I would ask the question, has it been received or are we supposed to request it?
I'm not very fair.
Uh, you would have to respond to that one for us.
All right, I have to look into it, Sean, but I think it comes with our annual alarm taxes that come in every night. So I will have to do a little more research on that.
So you, you think it's included in that account?
Um, I don't know that we've got it yet. I haven't seen it.
Okay. Well, we ought to get it.
Yeah.
You said that was forty-one, two hundred, am I correct? Yes.
Yes, forty-one, two hundred. And I'm, I'm curious, uh, there again, flip over another page, it's page three of eleven in that revenue section. Actually, it's district court expenses. We had budgeted ninety-five thousand. The, the account number there is fifty-four, zero, thirty-eight. We had budgeted ninety-five thousand dollars. As of November, we've only paid fifty. So we're forty-four thousand dollars under what we had budgeted and I'm trying to think, are we gonna have to pay that or is it, is that something, we got a big bill that we owe or does anybody? District court. I'm, I'm kinda curious of how our December's gonna wind up at the end of the year. We're looking at November numbers, we got a month to go and.
No, I think we have quarters as we go. But you're saying, you're saying now, I, I can see it's not.
It's, it's, and I, maybe it'll be a big payment in December, maybe not, I'm trying to figure out, are we gonna have a surplus or a shortage for the year end of twenty twenty-one?
I asked about the surplus already. No, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, I don't know from last month or month before, but I asked a question about this court and us and how we, um, did things and did we owe them or, you know?
So anyway, I was gonna say, well, I, I, I don't know who's supposed to look into that.
Well.
If I may, on the Act one fifty-six, which is the court cost, that there's a certain amount each month that has to be met, sixteen thousand, three hundred seventy dollars. There's been a, a fund this year surplus. We have made, there's been more money for district court this year than I've seen in my eighteen years. So there will be a surplus because we have, that extra has to go through the state and then they trickle it back down through the city and the county funds.
Okay. So we probably won't, won't be out that much more, is what it sounds like.
Uh, some of the things, okay, all right, is there any more discussion on?
One, one other item, one other item here, A and P commission. Okay, we had budgeted, and I'm gonna say this has been done for several years. We budgeted that the A and P commission, they, they like to build parks. And we've had, have, I'm gonna say, had worked out a deal several years ago where they were gonna transfer a hundred grand out of that A and P money into our general fund to help pay for the parks upkeep. And I think all they've done is, is spend it on, uh, that, that line item, it's fifty-two, four hundred. They, they bought Christmas decorations, those are great, they've done some other things and that's great. But, uh, the general fund ought to have that hundred thousand dollars transfer. I don't, I'm not sure who's responsible for making that request. Do we need a resolution?
We have to make a request to them before we do.
Okay, well, it looks like that's part of the deal, we set it up, it was in their budget to pay us, and it's in our budget to receive it. So. Somebody get her done?
I'll put it on the agenda for the meeting.
Well, the next meeting will be next year, this budget will be done. Uh, if it's, it's, if it's an administrative request, I'd say the administration should request the.
I appreciate you doing that, but I wanna, I mean, I've, I've tried, I've cut myself off about three or four times. I think we've convinced Mrs., uh, Lauren that she doesn't work for me, she works for you guys. And when you guys convinced her of that, I've asked for several things. And I've not gotten the things that I have asked for, but I've asked for them through her. And then I went to also to Mrs., um, uh, Mrs. Donna Stewart. But I asked for some, uh, for something a few, little bit, a little while ago, and I was told that she didn't print it out because of the trees and said, we're in South Arkansas, we need to burn down trees, cook, trees are renewable resource. I said, well, did you send it to me by email? She hadn't done it by paper or by email. So some of the things that you're talking about, I can't respond to because she has access to the finances, I don't.
If it's in, if it's in the budget, you can properly request it to be paid.
And I.
If you, if it's not in the budget, then.
I'm not asking for anything that's not in, I'm asking for reports, I'm telling you, I'm trying to keep up with reports. But she's convinced that she works directly for you. And so when I say something, I asked for, I asked for a copy of certain paperwork. And she said that because of trees, she what, she did not print out the report. I said, well, did you send me an email about it? And she had not responded to me by email or by that. And then, uh, she went and met with, the question I asked specifically, she met with, uh, Mr. Franklin about, Director Franklin about that question. Then they came back and gave him an answer verbally, but I'm better with paper, I'm a visual person. And so that's how I'm not able to answer this. Finances are not done on my computer, I cannot go on my computer and look at what she's saying. I have to ask her to print it or send me an email. And, and that's what literally happened, she said, she said it there.
My question is, and whether you need to get Mr. Frye to judge on it or Donna to, whatever, it's in the budget. And if all you need to do is make a request, I ask that you make a request to transfer that hundred thousand from the A and P funds to the general fund.
If I can't see. Okay, I, I, I was, I, I didn't.
Motion for what? Are you able to do it and we're not able to do it?
Can we ask Mr. Lauren to step up, let's just ask her instead of going through around the bush over and over and over?
I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't understand the problem, really.
So my question is, how do we get the hundred thousand from the A and P commission to the general fund? What's the process?
Somebody has to request it from the A and P commission, whether it be the mayor or Director Franklin. It's for parks improvement. And so one of them needs to request it from the A and P commission. In which I don't believe they meet in December, so they would have to probably do a special meeting for us to get it down before the end of the year.
Now, I'm a little confused, do the A and P request that they send it or, or someone to empower?
Someone from us makes a request to the A and P commission.
And that's all they need, you don't have a problem with trees, cutting down trees, nothing to do with trees, it's just somebody has to.
If I can't see a current piece of paper to know what has been done until we, uh, until a meeting of sorts, then how can I judge what needs to be done? How can I project what needs to be done if I can't see it in time enough to make those projections? I can look at something, like you just looked at zero percent, zero percent. We got these papers Thursday, right? Well, I asked for the papers during the week, I asked to understand things early. And if I don't get them early, then I see them almost when you see them, right? Well, I'm here every, I'm here daily, I'm here daily, and so I get an opportunity to ask those questions. I, I'm not getting the.
So you make, you make a request for the, for the reports or whatever and you're not getting?
She told me that she, it was, she mentioned the trees and that was what happened. And in that particular meeting, Mr. Franklin was there, he doesn't have to be called up for that, but I said, well, did you send it by email? And it wasn't sent by paper, it wasn't given to me by paper and wasn't given to me by email. Not on that particular one, but on some of the reports that I've been asking for. I'm asking directly for specific pieces of paper to understand. I asked what you asked too, I said, where are we on the, what is our surplus for this year? I've asked all of those type of questions and the year isn't over yet, so the surplus isn't ready. Well, I just wanna know where we are so we can know what we can do.
I like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Yes, sir. I'll say it.
All right, what's the steps for that?
Make my motion, is it what's the topic of discussion? Is it gonna be employee, is it gonna be appointed position?
Yeah, yeah.
An employee.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I know, I don't have a problem with what we're doing, I'm in agreement with. But if, I know we could bring Mr. Frye in at certain type of time, let's establish the criteria.
I can't go into the session.
All right, but it is.
Take your permit.
He did that once.
I don't want to go into executive session.
Come on, Marvin.
Are there votes against the vote of the day?
I missed the second.
All right, two seconds. Those in favor, there's voting sign of I?
Aha.
Those opposed, there's voting sign of N?
Aha.
All right. Are there any, is there any more discuss- discussion on the financial report?
So, I guess, I guess it would be, uh, some executive session. Say whether or not any actions were taken in executive session.
What actions were taken in executive session?
Which usually be no action was taken.
No action was taken. All right, is there any more discussion on the financial report? We had some corrections made, um, or some questions, but no corrections?
I don't have any corrections at this time.
All right. Those in favor, there's voting sign of I?
Aha.
Those opposed, there's voting sign of N? I was having on the financial report. At this time, we're preparing for audience participation. If you'd be so kind when your name is called, when you step to the microphone, please take your name and your physical address for the record, and you have three minutes. Mom, all right.
No, no, I said, are you ready?
I don't know. I don't know if I'm ready.
Mr. Smith.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mr. Brian Smith, um, what I wanna do is address three issues and it seems like this, um, people in the city have issues with my property on two twenty-three and two thirteen North Street. But the first issue I wanna address is there's a camper on our property. Now, we moved it off the front yard and put it on the side. But what I'm tired of is, it's always one thing after another, somebody complaining about issues of our property, somebody complaining about our yard. Um, when my dad, before he retired from the city of Camden, we put that trailer, we had people are against us. And I'm just fed up with the complaints and the issues from numerous people in the city having that mobile home over there and along with the camper being over there. Now, that being said, with the camper, the camper is over there temporarily. It's not there to be there forever, my friends just had a downfall and they're just there at the moment. But I'm also complaining about a lien on our property that the Eponets own this land and they never paid it. They let the property set up, now that lien falls on me and I'm having to pay that. I also paid one thousand and two hundred dollars and hired a plumber and I was out of pocket for that. And I had to borrow money from my dad to get some plumbing done and we had neighbors call the city on us again. Now, we were, we were trying to do things by the code, I understand we gotta follow book. But the point is, we're trying to get things done over there by the book and do work, but it just kinda breaks my heart that we got some people in the city feel like this about us. But that's all I'd have to say, I would really like all that to be addressed and the city and, and people look at us different. That's all I have to say.
Yes, sir.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna wanna make sure I hear it right. You state the name of the Eponets, did they own the property?
They own the property, Victory Church owns the house next door to us, they bought that. But the Eponets own the land beside, which is, I own it now, two twenty-three is where my trailer's at. Two thirteen, they own that as well.
Okay, but you bought the property from the Eponets?
That's correct. But the trailer I sit on, now that I bought from Kathy Horton, she used to work for the city of Camden.
Just the property?
Just the property.
All right, but they look, they, they had some back taxes on that property.
Yes, that's, I believe that's the parcel that has the lien on it.
We can, uh, entertain a conversation further after this to, um, see, have you already paid the lien?
Well, I've pa- I've paid part of it, Donna Stewart was, um, aware of that day, I came here and made payments on it and I still owe a balance on there.
That's fine, all right, then, give me an opportunity to, uh, to look into this one more time, give me a chance.
And I'm also, I wanna say this, I don't, and I don't say much and I'm not trying to step on nobody's stuff, but I, I'm not gonna say no, but I had the street department, somebody on the street department kinda caught a attitude with me because I was getting some work done over there. But I don't have nobody help and I don't expect it, and I'm doing my best to get that property looking good and do right. But when I have people nagging at me, turning me in, I'm not even bothering, it makes me, I could've took ten thousand dollars that I spent on that money and bought me a house. And what makes me fed up is nobody don't wanna invest in no neighborhoods like that, but we wanna do Birdie Dishing, we wanna do Cherokee. And I, I, I was fixing to just buy me a house, but I believe in our city.
Yes, sir.
But it disappoints me when I get that feedback and it hurts my wife, she's, she's at the point, she wants to move away. But I don't wanna give up on our city.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
Uh, next is Mr. Larry Mitchell.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening. Larry Mitchell, six forty-nine Magnolia Road. I, I'm not gonna be long, but I have a serious problem since they cut that wood down there off of Magnolia Road. I have coyotes in my yard, wolves, dogs and everything. So what can we do about that? Because it's not safe for me and my wife to walk outside anymore. Uh, I talked with the chief of police the last time I was over here, he told me to get pictures. I put a, a game camera out there to get pictures. I bet you I have over five thousand pictures. So is there anything we can do to, to come, somebody come in? Or either y'all give me permission, I'm an old soldier, I can take care of it. But I don't wanna go to jail taking care of it.
Yes, sir, thank you, uh.
If, if I might say, I went and I looked at that.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it was, they just left. It was a clear clutter.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But all of that, some of that was already down, old, rotten property.
Mm-hmm.
And it, I, I can't speculate, I'm not a game one, but I assumed that they had some beans up in there.
Mm-hmm.
And they gonna hang around there.
We gonna get rid of them.
We, we need, I just think we need to look in and try to help him out and make a decision, but it's pretty bad.
You're aware? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Wendell Carr?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Wendell Carr, 1142 Herb Street, Camden, Arkansas. I'm just here to say thank you for the generosity you've done for me and the Public Works Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
That's it?
Alright. Thank you so much. At this time, we're preparing for the mayor's report. And on tonight, I'm going to call first for an annual report from my district of Camden, Washington County. Ms. Victoria Huggins, who is the chief court clerk. Please, and thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Lot, city council members, ladies and gentlemen. As introduced, I am the chief court clerk, Victoria Huggins, for the district court of Camden and Washington County. And I would like to present our 2021 end of year progress report. I would like to begin by saying that 2021 started out with new changes under new leadership. Honorable Judge David Graham, who was newly elected as our district court judge. As we were saddened to say goodbye in retirement to our honorable Judge Philip Foster, who was such an amazing and caring judge and leader, we welcome Judge Graham with open arms. We're truly blessed to have such great leadership by both of these outstanding judges. With new leadership comes some changes in our fines. Some were increased, such as our driving while intoxicated offenses. First offense was increased from $825 to $1,325. Now, this also increased the third offense to $3,325. Some fines were decreased, such as no proof liability insurance, decreased from $375 to $250, and the possession of a controlled substance act. First offense decreased from $620 down to $320. Some penalties were enhanced with jail time for habitual offenders of such charges, such as driving on suspended driver's license and no liability insurance. Fourth offense, within five years results in jail time now, unless with the driver's license, they do obtain the driver's license. Some penalties were diminished, such as no jail time ordered for first-time shoplifting cases if the items taken were less than $100. 2021 also brought with its sadness as changes were made in our staffing. Our matriarch, our queen of the court, Chief Deputy Clerk, Ms. Gloria Fountain, retired after an illustrious career of poised dedication for over 33 years. Ms. Fountain is not only the persona of elegance and hard work, she brought with her every day a kind Christian heart and uplifting voice. We were saddened also that Deputy Clerk, Ms. Rachel Cross, had to resign due to health issues. Ms. Cross is also one of the most professional, dedicated ladies I've ever known, and has such a beautiful, caring spirit. These ladies are truly missed. With these exits, this brought in new personnel and generated promotions. Ms. Teresa Herring was promoted to chief deputy clerk. Ms. Herring is also the civil and small claims clerk, as well as handling many other tasks with efficiency and enthusiasm. Not only does she take on something new and learn it quickly, she also has a talent for technical issues and always steps right in to fix whatever the problem may be. Ms. Geraldine Poole was promoted from our part-time employee to full-time deputy clerk. Ms. Poole processes all of the court citations, which involves many different procedures, as well as efficiently handles other duties. She never turns down a request to assist wherever the need may be, and always with such as mine. We hired two new employees, Ms. Janet Quarles and Ms. Janice Pettit. Ms. Quarles was hired by the Camden in 2020 through a COVID grant as the checkpoint entry employee. Ms. Quarles not only fulfilled that appointment, but she offered to help us in whatever assistance she could be, which led to her being hired as a full-time deputy clerk. Ms. Pettit was hired as our part-time employee and came with years of knowledge of the court system and computer system as she retired from an illustrious career at the Washington County Sheriff's Office for over 30 years. Ms. Janice springs with her wisdom, love, and guidance. Our probation department is run by probation officer Ms. Debbie Brown and her assistant, Ms. Brenda Parker. These ladies not only process probation, they initiate, set up, and coordinate all of the payment plans, community service, anger management, wage assignment, and alcohol education. Ms. Debbie and Ms. Brenda are the first you see as you walk through the doors, and these two greet you with love and eagerness to help. They are such a blessing. And as you know, 2021 also brought the pandemic with it. As it continues to wreak havoc, it has mandated many changes to our method of operation. Our probation officer, Ms. Debbie Brown, who is with me tonight, has stepped up to not only fulfill her duties, and as we lost our COVID grant checkpoint employee, she volunteered to coordinate the COVID checkpoint for each court date. We hold court sessions each month, eight court sessions each month, plus we host East Camden Court once a month, so this is quite a task. I would like to say a special thank you to Ms. Brown. Her dedication to step up and do any and everything to get the job done is very much appreciated and admired. And as I stated, she not only heads the probation department, she completes numerous duties for our district court and always with such professionalism and dedication. She's an inspiration and a lifesaver for me, and I'm so grateful for her and this amazing team. As I mentioned before, we still implement the court day COVID checkpoint procedures. These procedures consist of, before entering to the building, masks are required for the defendants, which these are provided. The defendants are required to complete the COVID questionnaire and temperature is checked. The Washington County bailiffs, under the direction of Chief Bailiff Carl Stewart, are so generous in assisting Ms. Brown with organizing this procedure each court day. Chief Stewart and his staff have a focused ethic and blessed description. We have a video doorbell for daily operating procedures. We are able to communicate with the person at the door and can offer assistance in whatever they need. If they require inside accommodations, we do have glass windows at almost all of our stations now. Cross-training our staff has been an ongoing goal. In 2021, we have made much progress in this area and plan for everyone to be completely cross-trained in the near future. I take much pride in this district court team. I have the honor and privilege each and every day to watch this wonderful group speak with grit and help the public with such caring and zeal. Another change we're possibly looking at is our honorable Judge David Graham is running for circuit judge with the election next year. If he is elected, an interim judge will be appointed by the governor and will take position as district court judge in 2023. This appointed judge will not be able to run for the full-time state district court judge race, which will be in 2024. Now, I'd like to provide the yearly reports for receipt collections, as well as other pertinent year information. I provided these reports in your packets, plus I have a couple of extra copies if you're needed. The first report is the total of collections up to December the 5th. This total is $873,966.59. The first page breaks down what the court clerk office collected, the police department, probation, and sheriff's office. And the next page I printed out for you, I just kind of wanted to point out something that the credit debit card was just implemented in May 20th of this year by the Washington County Sheriff's Office. It's only at the window right now, but the plan in the near future is to have the online payment plan. And this is really an asset. A lot of people inquire about it, and we're really working on getting that where they can take online. The total civil cases, civil small claims cases filed this year were 283, plus there were 25 filed in the last week. I think everyone's trying to hurry up and get their lawsuits filed. The total cases that were filed were 9,003. This is your Arkansas State Police, your City of Camden jurisdictions, forestry, gaming, fish, and Washington County. That's quite a lot of cases filed. The warrants that were issued up until December 5th were 3,081. Now, those served out of that were 1,182. Those crossed, which, those were recalled, were 2,876. A lot of this was due to the pandemic, and being there were no jail availability, these warrants, they were called, it's kind of like we had an amnesty pretty much all year, calling, they could call and say, needed a warrant, reset, it was very much available this year. The total cases that were disposed of, which, these are the cases that after court, the judges dock it are entered in. These consist of bottom four of it, guilty, not guilty. There's a breakdown that shows you how much each and everyone, but that was 12,319 cases that were disposed of. And the total community service credit applied, in which this had a big dent in it this year due to the pandemic. It was $27,316.75 collected. The Camden Shop and Public Works had the same exact hours turned in, 473. There were a lot at the jail that did community service, 900 hours. Other, that's your victims' assistance or church or nonprofit organization that they're allowed to go and complete their community service. Arkansas State Troopers and Highway Police Citation totaled 2,477 as of December 5th. If there's any questions about your reports, I would like to answer. If not, in closing, I would like to thank our honorable Mayor Julian Lot for his leadership, dedication, and genuine care for our wonderful city of Camden, its citizens, his staff, and our entire work family. We truly appreciate all that you do for us, Mr. Mayor, and the zeal and care that you put into it daily. I would like to thank each department head for all the help and encouragement they have provided me this year and always. They always take time to answer my question and are always eager to assist me in all of my many situations. Ms. Lauren, with such kindness and professionalism. I would like to express a big thank you to Mr. Michael Frye for his expert assistance as our illustrious city attorney and city prosecutor. He is always eager to assist, advise, and answer so many of our questions on a daily basis. We truly bug him quite a lot, and he never, ever minds doing research, always has a smile, and makes sure we have the information we need. Mr. Michael, you truly are a blessing and genuinely brighten our days. City council members, I would like to take a minute to thank each and every one of you for your time and dedication to our fair, clean city and its foundation. The decisions you vote on, I know, are preceded by much thought, much research, and many prayers. The decisions you make govern our citizens, and I know this comes with hard work and pride. Our respect and gratitude to each one of you is greatly expressed. As we go into this new year, I'm so thankful for my job and for each and every one of you. I ask God to guide us into the future, remember the lessons of our past, and with much zeal and pride, dive into the present with all of our might. Appreciate your team because teamwork makes dream work, right, my friend? God bless you. Have an amazing and blessed finale of 2021, and Merry Christmas, Feliz Snowy Dó.
Thank you so much. Wonderful report. So, you have any comments, questions about so far? Thank you so much for a remarkable year, and thank you for bringing us that report. At this time, we're calling for Mr. Ben Wooton, our code enforcement officer, for an annual report of code enforcement.
Mayor, I see where, I see how Chief Woody feels now. In our staff meeting, he normally does his report after Ms. Vic. And it's always like that, every Monday morning. So I see how Chief Woody feels. She always bring a delightful spirit to our council, to our staff meetings. To our mayor, council, and citizens of this great city of Camden. I condense, I condense my report quite a bit because of a lot of resolutions that I've got on the agenda. So I won't bore you with a lot of numbers and that type of thing tonight, but...